...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Earl?
Thank you everybody for coming. Go ahead and call the roll please.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Here.
Trustee Button?
Here.
And we're all here this evening. Item four, public participation. We have our public comment period where any member of the public can address the board for two minutes. And if there's anybody that's here to do that this evening, you can come up to the podium at this time. Don't all jump up at the same time. All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to item B, which is recognition of the safety event volunteers. And with that, I will turn it over to the Chief of Police, Dan Myers, for that.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to take a moment and thank everybody in the audience that came to assist and volunteer for our great safety event. I want to thank Armando Sanders, Deputy Chief, Sergeant Liz Palco, my assistant Ada Ripinger, who pretty much coordinated that, along with Donna Hoagul and Kim Winkler. So those five were the ones that were the main people. I also want to thank Officer Hull, who came and volunteered, Officer Johnson, Michael Lychek, volunteered on their Sunday to come and help. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Sergeant Palco.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you for all, everything you did for the event and for coming out tonight. It was amazing. I was gone on vacation for a week and didn't have to worry. Ada assured me not to worry about anything. And she was right, when I got back, everything was good to go. So thank you so much. I heard plenty of compliments about how wonderful it was, and I appreciate all my neighbors and friends that helped, and Kim, your whole family, and Ada, your whole family. So very appreciative. Officer Johnson, Sergeant Diaz, Officer Mick Lychek, Officer Hull, and Officer Gray, also volunteered their time and came in uniform. So we had a Mario competition with Officer Hull and one of the little kids. Not sure who won yet. I heard Officer Hull was better, but they were both stunning in their outfits. As I call your name, I'm going to have you come up and stand in the center, and I'd like to get a group picture when we're done. So I have a certificate to present to you, and again, this really means a lot to me. I'd like to see you all back out here next year. I believe we're going to be able to do it again next year. Trustee Marisack and his whole family were very helpful in everything too, so I think it's a good thing for the community, and I really appreciate the volunteer hours you all put in for this. So first up, Allison Fiaquino. The certificate reads, "The Montgomery Police Department wishes to recognize Allison Fiaquino for generously volunteering her time, talents, and efforts to the inaugural Montgomery Police Department Halloween Safety Event." Thank you. Thank you very much. Samantha Franks. I won't reread it. It inserted your name. I promise. Thanks, Sam. Kim Winkler. Additionally, I'm going to give Kim a certificate for her fiancee, Pete Sylvester. He also assisted in bringing a lot of the games to us, and we set them up with him.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dana Sutton. You ran a good game of Feed the Monster. Everyone liked it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Moira. Good job. Juliette Suter. Bailey Roskop. Ryan Ripinger. Thanks, Ryan. Parker Ripinger. Thank you. Dave Ripinger. You guys might have to make two lines. But you'll have to be in back. Thank you. Ada Ripinger. As the pictures are scrolling, the picture of the little boy and the teddy bear, we raffled that off. That was our winner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Sammy appropriately was going to rename her game of Plinko to Palco. I voted yes. Good job, Sammy. Brian Marisack. Thanks, Brian. Bethany Marisack. Shirley Marisack. And Doug Marisack. Thank you very much. Thanks, Doug. Thank you. Jeff Zofel. And Kalen Zofel. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Cutest penguin ever. Officer Hull. Coral. I think I left yours on my desk. It's made, so I'll give you yours to leave it back, okay? Sorry, my bad. And I don't think here tonight is Jada B. She's also one of the Girl Scouts, so Kim's daughters and Jada and Cecilia were part of the Girl Scouts, so they assisted us. But I wanted to thank you guys all, and actually, we need the Chief and the Deputy Chief in here as well, because they all worked on this, so we can get, perhaps, Mike can take a picture with, I mean, I'm just saying, I appreciate it. And I don't think we're all going to fit, so we may have to smooth. Shorter. Smooch. We have to smooth. Chief goes in the back. The Franks family, all of the cutouts that were at our event and the inflatable things, their family hosts a humongous Halloween fest out in Big Rock, which this was the last year, and it was this past Saturday, and it was awesome. But she donated all of that stuff, so we didn't spend any money, almost everything, because it was all donated, so we were very appreciative of that, and we got lots of compliments. And I think the Chief thought we spent a few hundred dollars, but when we assured him that it came from the Franks family, he was very happy. So thank you.
And you guys can hang out for the whole meeting, but you can also leave, and we won't be offended. But thank you for all your effort that day. We really appreciate it. And Sergeant Palco, thank you for heading this up.
Thank you. (applause).
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item D on the consent has been removed, or moved down to items for separate action, so that'll be E on items for separate action. So I'll read the three, A, B, and C, and entertain a motion for approval. Accounts payable through September 16th of 2014, accounts receivable for September of 2014, and ordinance 1632, which is granting a special use for a drive-through and outdoor café and rezoning property in the Ogden Hills subdivision. And this is the second reading. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second by Trustee Lee. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Button?
Yes.
That carries six zero. Moving on, items for separate action. Item A, which is the PSA for Pearl Street Storm Sewer. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Public Works, Mike Poobens.
Thank you, President Brawley. In your board pack tonight is a request from staff for the approval of a professional services agreement with Engineering Enterprise to perform the Pearl Street Storm Sewer design study. Pearl Street Storm Sewer runs between Wobonzie Avenue and Sherman Avenue. It was originally built in 1913, so it's quite old. We'd recently performed televised inspection of that storm sewer and found that it's in pretty poor shape, a lot of cracking in the crown, which can lead to collapses and just other areas where the pipes eroded away. Excuse me. This is part of the TIF, the Wobonzie Preserve TIF. It's been established, there are funds in that TIF to pay for both, or it's designed to pay for both the design and construction. There are currently funds available to pay for the design work. So part of the, main part of the design will be the review of different construction methods that might be used. It could be lining, or pipe bursting, or just standard excavation. Once we review all those, we'll select the most cost-effective one and recommend that to move forward for construction when funds become available. The amount of the award would be for $36,170 to Engineering Enterprises, and again, this would be for the design of the replacement of the Pearl Street Storm Sewer. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Quick one. When you say sufficient funding available, what are you looking, I know that's why we're getting an engineer, but are you looking at a couple hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, roughly? Not polling anything.
Quite honestly, that's the reason why we'd like to move forward with the design, because the cost can change dramatically. If we have to do a standard conventional installation, I think it'll be over $400,000, because it's right down the middle of Pearl, it's quite deep, and so we're trying to find other methods that are less expensive to build it or to replace it. But we're concerned that we may, it may be some combination of a couple of different processes. I mean, as you can appreciate, the sewer is made out of vitrified clay, it's somewhat fragile, the manholes are brick, so, you know, do we, what do we do? What's the best way to go about it? So it could be a fairly expensive proposition. When we looked at it and budgeted for it in the TIF, I think we budgeted for full-on, you know, full conventional installation, but we'd like to reduce that cost.
Okay, thank you.
And we have funds greater than just this 36 in the SSA at this point?
I believe that's correct.
So it'd be conceivable that we'd move forward at some point relatively soon with construction?
In the TIF funds, we do have this and additional funds right now, but not enough to do the entire construction.
Okay. They just don't want to see us do this now and then do this again in 10 years when we have money for it, but I guess we don't know until we look at it. Any other questions? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Button?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman?
Ye.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
That carries six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, ordinance 1633, granting a special use for a convenience store located at 1550 Douglas Road. This is the home pantry and liquor. We discussed this once before, this is the second reading, and I'll ask Director Young to take us through this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is the second reading of this request. This has been before the Plant Commission for Special Use. That obviously does not involve specifically the liquor license. This is just for the special use within a B district for a convenience store. The Plant Commission made a recommendation of approval based on the fact that they felt that it would not be a problem for this area, and with the full understanding that this was for a convenience store and that the liquor license was a separate issue. So staff and Plant Commission are recommending approval.
Thank you. Are there questions of staff on this? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Button?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman?
Ye.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
And that carries five one. Thank you. And I did want to ask, have they made their application for liquor license, or are they kind of waiting until this moves forward? Chief?
I would appreciate if Attorney Anderson can answer that question.
Sure, it's a transfer of a liquor license.
Oh, that's right.
And they haven't applied for the transfer yet, because until they had all the qualifiers to meet the criteria, there wouldn't be any point.
Okay.
So I would suspect that they will apply now shortly hereafter.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item C, which is the two-play liquor license. We'd like to ask if this is tabled tonight, and we'll revisit this at our November 10th Board Meeting. If there are no objections, entertain, actually, if they entertain anything?
Well, not really. It's just for discussion, but...
No, it's for approval.
Oh, it is for approval.
So you'd have to motion to table?
I move to table.
Second.
Second by Youngerman. Can you call the roll?
Trustee Button?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman?
Ye.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D, award of a contract for stump removal. That is nice and to the point. I like that. Turn it over to Director Poobens for this one.
Early street forward request, asking for the approval to award a contract to JPC Tree Care of Montgomery for stump grinding and removal in an amount not to exceed $24,390. Three bids were received for this project. JPC is the lowest. They bid per inch diameter of tree that gets removed, so they were $4.50 per inch. The other two were $5.45 and $5.53 per inch. That'll cover 671 stumps, and it is our intent that that will remove the remainder of the stumps that are currently out there. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have one. Sorry, Mr. Bond. I was noticing that the bid, one of the bids stated that it was for stump removal and that they would be filling in the subsequent area with the chips and then taking any excess away, but the proposed bid doesn't, it just says removal of stump shavings. I'm assuming they're not going to leave holes?
No, well, that'll be actually separate operation. In the past, our staff has done the turf restoration, so that'd be our intent again. We'll see how the season goes. It's getting late in the year, so our goal to at least be to get dirt and seed and erosion control blanket on those. I don't think we'll get turf established at this time, but...
No, I was just more...
The contract is to grind and remove shavings, and then we'll follow up and do restoration.
When you do that restoration, you're going to remove all those chips, the grinding, and then put black dirt and some grass seed down?
Yes, the chips should be removed by the contractor, trustee, and then, again, in the past, our crew would then come by with black dirt and seed, and that erosion control mat looks kind of like a straw mat.
Because I had a, Rich Hammond called me up, I know, and he said they got the black dirt down, but they never seeded it. So he went and got his own seed.
On what, on a previous stump restoration?
Yeah, where you cut a stump out.
Okay.
Kimberly and Amber.
All right. I'll have to check with our staff on that, trustee. It was my understanding that all those were seeded as they went, but that's certainly the intent, and we don't want to just put dirt down and have weeds grow up. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a timeline? 612, we probably can't get those done this fall, but...
I don't have a specific timeline handy, but they'll be done this fall. It's a fairly fast-moving operation.
Terrific, good.
Yeah, and they're all generally in the same vicinity, or have large numbers that are in the same vicinity, so they'll just move down the street. I would guess by Thanksgiving for certain, we'll have them out.
I would move to approve, but there's no further discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, but Marisack, I just have one question. This comes from the same line item of our tree replacement?
Correct.
Budget, so, okay. Which is, I mean, it's logical. It seems to make sense that complete removal of the trees should come first before we start planting trees all over the town, because this will impact the amount of trees that we can replace.
Right. We had a total budget of $80,000, and that generally covers tree planting, purchase and planting, tree removal, tree pruning, stump grinding. Restoration is in a different line item. And, yes, sir.
Is this the total bill, $28,000?
$24,000, where'd it go?
390.
$24,390.
Okay, thank you.
Are we still okay timeline-wise with people purchasing trees to plant? Is that, when does that draw to a close? I've had a couple residents ask.
We're doing our fall purchasing now. If people are interested, I mean, we don't want to scare them away. It's getting pretty tight, though. Ed has told me at Paff Arborist feels confident planting up until the ground freezes. He feels as long as he can get soil in and around the root ball, it's okay, and he even prefers to do it when it's cooler. I think there's less shock on the tree. So I would encourage people to do that. As we discussed, we've got about 60-something trees to put in yet, so...
Jeff, I would, can we ask whoever runs the Facebook page to maybe send out a little notice that it's still okay, because I think people are gun-shy, they think it's too late, to put it out there that it's not too late. Sign up now, and if we don't get to it, you're on the list for in the spring.
Yeah, really, two main reasons would prevent us. Weather, if the weather turns bad, and tree availability. We have an approved tree list for Parkway Trees. Ed tries to talk with the people who are donating the money to see if there's a particular type they like, and if it fits in with the overall plan for that street. We try not to get too many of one variety, for instance. Sometimes the trees that they want aren't as available, so...
Yeah, it's not too late.
People can sign up now, we'll put them on the list for spring, too, so don't be shy.
Thank you. If there's no further comment, you can go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Button?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yeah.
Trustee Heinz?
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman?
Ye.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
That carries six zero. Thank you. Item E this evening was pulled from consent. Ordinance 1634, amending Section 1102 of the Village zoning ordinance regarding off-premises billboard signs. This is the second reading. If staff has anything to add, go ahead.
Well, as you mentioned, it is the second reading. This was a very specific text amendment to work with the property owner along the right-of-way for Route 30. There are nine specific conditions that go into this amendment that basically target just a limited number of opportunities for this type of signage, so we felt that it was a good compromise in lieu of trying to look at a variance situation. So both the Plant Commission and staff recommend approval of this amendment.
All right. Any comment? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Trustee Lee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Youngerman. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman?
Ye.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Button?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
No.
And that carries five one. Thank you. Moving on, items for discussion. We have the Route 30 Phase 1, and that I'll ask Engineer Wallers for his presentation on this.
Thank you, Mayor Brawley. As you all know, IDOT is conducting a Phase 1 study for Route 30 from basically Albright Road or Route 31 interchange all the way out to Illinois 47. And as you may recall, in some of the first public meetings that we had on the project, they proposed a rural cross-section, which was about 180 to 200 feet in right-of-way width. And at that time, the village objected to the nature of that, mainly because of the fact that we have pretty substantial landscape buffers in place already, and it would have encroached on those, and quite honestly, it didn't fit the character of the neighborhoods that were out there. So IDOT did switch to what they called an urban section, and they had eliminated what were the alternates one and two, and settled on alternates three and four. And as you recall, a few meetings ago, we discussed, this is back in, I think in July, we talked about that they had these two, three and four alternatives, and both had maybe the easiest thing to point to was the 30-foot center median, which we frankly thought was a little bit excessive in terms of landscape area in the center of the right-of-way. Our concern has been, we want to protect our perimeter landscaping that exists already. So the board directed us to have a meeting with IDOT. The mayor sent a letter to IDOT indicating the board's concern relative to the, you know, the width of the median and generally the, more the, I guess, desire to protect our existing landscaped area. So IDOT met with staff on October 3rd and presented what they called a revised alternate three. And in that plan, and the cross-section is attached to the memo, it's a 22-foot median down from a 30-foot, it's eight-foot shoulders down from 10-foot, and a three-foot offset to the sidewalk from back of curb down from five feet. So those were, you know, smaller but significant incremental reductions in the width of the cross-section, and now it's generally down to 140 to 150 feet wide. Now, at the intersections, it does go back to the full 30-foot median, mainly because they want to reserve the ability to put in dual turn lanes in the future. So that's almost, that's understandable, and I think that's a good use of the median at that point. In order to appreciate, you know, what that means, IDOT did prepare strip maps of the right-of-way, and they're hard to see even at, I don't know, Jeff, if you can zoom in on those, using the zoom function of the PDF, maybe?
You can hear it cranking.
Yeah.
Well, if they don't come up, I have the actual physical strip map, but it's just difficult to reproduce and, you know, distribute. But what you'll see is that it's generally, it does, you know, get into our landscape areas, but it's pretty minimal intrusion into those. So at the meeting that we had, the staff review meeting where they presented their refined alternate three, staff said, you know, this is a great improvement over what we've had, but we'd like you to go to 18-foot median instead of a 22-foot median. So they went back and looked at it closer, and in the memo, I included their verbatim response from, you know, and there, if, to put this in perspective, the state, as a consultant do the design, the Federal Highway Administration... the federal highway administration has guidelines for, um, the width of medians, the type of curb, the angle of a curb, the slope of the roadway, all these things are set and you have to follow those guidelines. So, we, but they did challenge it, but as you can see from the response, the feds were only willing to go so far and twenty-two-foot median is about as far as they would go uh, on the project, so tonight, um, really coming forward to let you report on the fact that we had the meeting and that we did, um, I think, make significant progress in, in the section that's being proposed. There will be another public hearing, I believe it's going to be scheduled for December so they can get more, um, comments. But I-DOT was interested to know the feelings of the board relative to the changes that have been made to date, if it's something that is generally acceptable, if it's, uh, you know, not acceptable. So, the purpose of the memo is just kind of report to you what's going on and then a- answer any questions and see if you needed any additional information or if you have any comments you'd like to give us tonight, so.
This is just enough, isn't it, to save a lot of the, the trees and bushes?
If you could see it, it's, it's hard, but I think what we'll, we'll see that it generally does a pretty good job of preserving our landscaping on the corridor.
Pete, I have two questions or concerns. The eight-foot paved shoulder, is that enough for, for example, a police stop, because they don't necessarily come right behind the car?
Right, so I think in terms of a police stop, it would be safe because one of the reasons why the police officer's offset is to fully block the lane and they have their lights on, so it's, it's a noticeable, uh, incident and people would move around them. Um, the, the shoulder is designed for avoidance of, uh, you know, a car stopped in front if you have to make an emergency maneuver or if something darts in front of you and you have to have a little bit of room to maneuver. Or if you have a flat tire, you'll have enough room to get over there, it's not luxurious by any means. And, but I think the fact that the federal highway administration, um, allows for it would tell us that it's, it's a reasonable accommodation. Um, there's quite a few roadways that don't have any, um, shoulder that have curb and gutter, Orchard Road's a good example of that. I think there's a, a benefit to have the shoulder and that's why, even though it costs us an extra ten feet on, or eight feet on either side, I think it's worth having. Eight feet, ten feet, I think it's sufficient, but that's something that we can, um, press them a little bit more on, but, um, you know, we were trying to get as much reduction in that right-of-way as we could, so. I think the fact that they're willing to do it tells us that they believe it's a safe, uh, still a safe, uh, feature.
Right, that's what I was thinking as well, that with them coming back with that recommendation, my other concern is also now the distance between the actual roadway and where there could be pedestrians walking, so now that's been reduced. We're looking at the eight-foot shoulder and three feet between, so eleven feet from the cars go, it's going to be forty-five miles per hour now?
Probably, I mean, the, the speed limit hasn't been set, it's parts of an hour fifty-five, but I think we would request, uh, them to look at it and given the traffic volume, I would suspect we would get a forty-five mile an hour speed limit.
Okay.
Again, I, you know, um, again, I think that the fact that they're using barrier curb, they believe, again, that it's a safe condition, I don't know honestly if two extra feet is going to matter in terms of, of that. You know, there's, there's always the concern about just walking on high, those type of highways anyway. So I, I don't know if I have a good answer other than, I, you know, they believe that it meets the, the, uh, the safety standards that the fed, federal highway administration has set. Um, I think there'll be that additional public hearing, we can certainly bring it up and, and again, question it, um, but again, I think they, they've determined that they believe it's acceptable.
And I did note on the, uh, current project that they're doing on Route Thirty closer to Menards, the sidewalk that went in is at the back of curb, and so.
I noticed that.
I want the sidewalk.
If you, if you sneeze, you're in traffic.
But I also think that the three feet might give you a false sense of security that you're, you're still next to a highway where cars are going fast, but it keeps people who, if their car breaks down off the road or if somebody has to drive their bike, I've seen people cross Thirty on a bike on the bridge going over Fox, you know, Fox River. So, I'd rather have the sidewalk than not have the sidewalk, that's for sure.
I, I was just, uh, again, looking for your opinion and obviously, you know, this is a government agency that's coming back with their recommendation. I would say, i- is everyone pretty much comfortable with that distance from the roadway to where people would be walking or riding their bikes? Are we good with that? No? Yeah, I, I'm a little concerned, I'm a little concerned about that.
Could we scroll more toward Gordon Road?
Conceivably.
Push my luck with the graphics here.
Hold on, right-click.
Change to the hand. I gotta go up. Change to the hand.
Oh, it doesn't go that far.
Change to the hand.
And
I think it's a different page.
One of the different pages.
One thing I'm noticing here is the sidewalk hugs the road until it gets to the intersection, then it pulls away a bit. Is it possible for the sidewalk to be set back that much overall?
We can ask him to take a look at that, no question.
Give us a little bit of barrier, I think.
Wouldn't that be back to like the five-foot?
You're saying that push everything back into the landscaping, then?
Well, I don't know for sure, Jeff, I mean, I'd have to, we'd kind of have to look at it, one of the things they try to do is maintain uniformity in where they put things. And it may be that if we want that further offset, it may just impact more of the landscape areas and maybe that, maybe that's okay, maybe that's something we should do. I mean, we're a little bit myopic in our task, I think, but we were trying to get that, uh, section reduced as far as we could and be safe. And I think the, the I-DOT staff wouldn't allow us to do anything that wasn't safe, so they believe it's safe, but, um, doesn't hurt to take a second look at it, and I would say we can also ask them to see what impact it does have on our landscaping if we try to move this stuff a little bit.
That's the goal we're going with, was try to minimize the impact on the landscape, all those berms that were in there. And with this, we're sort of right at the edge of it.
And you're keeping traffic farther away from the residences. Here's a question, I know that the answer, I know the answer's going to be. What are the chances that if we said, we'll give you an easement over this stuff to put your sidewalk thirty feet behind the curb in our landscaping, you know, winds through there, and you guys give us the funds to install that sidewalk in the future? Had to ask, so.
It's nice to dream.
The observation I wanted to make on Gordon, we could just discuss, it looked like there's green space in the median in part of this, but not all of it. I'm, I'm gathering that's green space.
That is green space.
It'll help to preserve that if we can, I think.
Any other comments or questions? Moving forward, what are you, is staff looking for us to endorse an option at some point?
Well, I think that's what I-DOT's wanting to know if we're on the right track, they would like us to endorse an, an alternative and I, I, I think if I can characterize it, I think the twenty-two-foot median, I think there's really no objection to, right? So it's the concern about whether it should be an eight or ten-foot shoulder and whether or not going to a five-foot separation or further was, is possible. And we can ask them about that and see what they say. And I can relay that and perhaps, uh, you know, I can report back at the November tenth meeting. I think they would like some idea of where the board stands before they have the final public hearing, so.
Well, that's my main concern, is if we have people walking along this road, it's heavily traveled, it's a high rate of speed. If we can get that pathway a little bit further away from the cars and the trucks going by, I would be much more comfortable with that. The rest of the plan, I'm fine with, I'm good.
I will, I'll also check, um, Matt, on your question about alternate location and funding and if that's even
Mm-hmm.
possible, so at least we know that. One other thing, uh, that should be noted is, they won't, they don't go to the next levels of investigation, which are the hydraulics and the sound analysis until they've kind of set on this, um, cross-section. So, the question of whether there's, uh, going to be recommended sound wall or not is yet to be determined and will come up. And, you know, that was a little bit of a, um, concern relative to the location of the bike path along Thirty. And after, now that it's installed, if you've gotten, if you haven't had the chance, I'd, I'd suggest take the time to take a walk on the bike path that's along, uh, near, um, near the highway. And it's really not, uh, a terrible experience like I, I think some of us thought it might be and it's, it's a lot, it's quiet and it's kind of nice to, to feel that protected, so, um, if we, I guess where I'm getting is, we did move the, the path or sidewalk outside of the right-of-way per se, then if the sound walls went in, you'd have that corridor, you know, for that, but, um, I'm just concerned that they may not be interested in, they like to have right-of-way when they install improvements and they're less inclined to do it in the easements and the other problem is, there's areas where, uh, they don't control, we don't control right-of-way as much as on our landscape areas like the Park District properties and other places, so again, they like some consistency with these sections as well, so.
All right. I'm sure we'll follow up with this at our November tenth meeting.
I'm discussing in November tenth, I'll go back to the, uh, the staff at, uh, at I-DOT and, and pass this stuff along, let them think about it and let us know. And we'll try to take a closer look at the corridor and see if it has any significant impact. I mean, the, the change from eighteen to twenty-two did not have any significant impact on trees that were to be removed, so maybe another two feet or, you know, thereabouts, maybe that doesn't have any significant impact, we've saved eight feet in the middle, which was huge. And, you know, maybe we give back some of it on the perimeter, we'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll move on. Item B, the employee manual, that'll ask our finance director, Justin Van Voren, to summarize.
Thank you, President Browley. In front of the board tonight, uh, at the October thirteenth board meeting, staff presented, uh, the employee manual as amended. And in front of the board tonight, there were certain questions that the board asked us to look into. I am not going to read through the entire memorandum because it is i- in the packet, but staff has addressed all of the questions that the board had, uh, at the last meeting. If there are any specific questions or specific, uh, items you want me to go over, I will certainly do that. Otherwise, uh, we would look, uh, for direction to place it on, uh, a future meeting for approval.
How do we resolve the question about zero tolerance, I saw options here, but I didn't see a resolution.
There is, there are three options presented, one is truly zero tolerance, um, one is looking at, uh, alcohol and compassionate use of cannabis. And then, a true second chance policy would be, uh, providing a second, second chance for all. So, uh, if it pleases the board, I mean, we could certainly have a discussion about that, um, or place it on a future meeting, uh, agenda for discussion, specifically that one.
I'll verbalize my concern and we can discuss it on the next. It isn't so much that I don't have concern for the first use being a problem. I think my concern revolves around the potential for a test to give an inaccurate result. And, uh, that would not represent a good process between us and our employee. And I, from what I'm looking at with some other entities, the one strike and you're out may be difficult to administer or to enforce in, in its lack of fairness and process.
How it is currently done is, it is performed by Dryer, uh, that is who we have do our pre-employment testing, uh, any of our, um, testing that, uh, random testing is done by Dryer. We do have faith in Dryer that they are performing these tests as they should, so, um, I understand your concern, but at the same time, uh, I, I think that Dryer does a good job with the tests they do right now, so.
Well, I, I don't think I want to debate that, although I use Dryer and I have seen them suggest that I have a second test for, not for drug, but for blood pressure or other issues. I, I'm really troubled by putting that much weight on one ac- action, one incident. Should there be a lot of delay between test one and test two, in my mind, no. But I'm very uncomfortable with putting that much confidence in a, in a single laboratory event.
We could certainly talk to our vendor and, and ask if there's a secondary test that can be performed if it comes back inconclusive or, uh, positive immediately. Um, we could look and see if there's something else that could be done as a secondary test.
That, I think that would address, and it may not be as concerned the other board members share, but I, that's an awfully big decision and we, we could be talking about an employee that's been here ten, fifteen, twenty years. I would want to make very, very sure that we made the, the fair and the right choice. From the price of these tests, for sixty-five dollars, I'd rather say we tried it twice and we got the same result.
Depending on the, what the substances we're looking at, you know, a secondary test may not do it because if you're looking at alcohol, I would think by the time you got the result and got a secondary test, it would be out of their system, now others would stay in longer.
I'm not as troubled by the ability to test alcohol either, but the, um, the systemic, the blood tests or whatever the process is, or bodily fluid of some kind, I sure would like to not worry about whether we had the right result or not.
I think this is the, probably the big policy issue we still have outstanding that we're looking to you guys for direction on, you know, a lot of it was operational in there, but there were a few policy things, I think this is the big one still outstanding is, and Justin laid out, you know, we've said if you want to go zero tolerance altogether, if you want to allow a second chance for what we would consider legal drugs, so alcohol and medicinal marijuana, or do you want a second chance for all substances?
I mean, if the board is looking at the zero tolerance option, then I think maybe talking to the vendor and finding out what's their record, I mean, again, they're professionals at this, this is what they do. Do they do two tests, do they do side-by-side tests, do they do dual sampling? They have to have some procedures in place for this, especially if they know their client has a zero tolerance policy and someone's career hangs in the balance, so I'm sure that the vendor has some protocol for that. Doing, you know, dual, dual tests or dual sampling. So, it just, if that's the direction that the board's going with zero tolerance, then we probably have that conversation.
At a prior employer, uh, there was a secondary test. I don't have that in front of me right now, but I am sure I can certainly talk to the vendor and, and we can arrange something.
If there's an accident, are the, do the police, like, when the guy's at the hospital, do they do a blood draw at that time? So that would be your first test, basically, or what?
If, if he's at the hospital, then there's injuries involved, then he'd have to take a test, correct? Now, uh, we'd have to discuss, um, we would probably handle anyone else but a police accident, we're going to call the state police or the county to handle our own squad car accident, it's not good policy when there's injuries. And I'm not talking about just, um, you know, hitting a tree or hitting a curb or something like that and where you have damage, we'll take our own police reports for those, but when you have injuries involved and/or fatal, then it's, uh, best practice to have the county or state police handle that.
I mean, we can have Justin talk to Dryer and find out about secondary testing, we can bring that information back to you then.
I'd like to see this back to a committee of the whole, it, it seems like we, we've had five meetings on this sign and then you take this big thing and you throw it at us and say in two meetings, we want to know right now what's going on, to me, that's, we haven't discussed this. To me, that's, we haven't discussed this as much as we did that sign, which was a one-sentence thing. To me, I don't, I like to have a chance more to read into some of these things.
I agree Denny, I talked to Justin about that a little bit. I know it says November 10th in here, but it sounds like there's nothing super pressing on this, that maybe we can, that that committee of the whole kind of delve into this a little further, the policy, the policy more than the other things in the document, but...
When I mention a future meeting, I'm talking, it does not have to be November 10th, and Village President Brawley and I did discuss this, and there is nothing pressing to get this, we just wanted to get it back in front of the board as quickly as possible, so...
I do appreciate that, I don't want, I don't like things like this to, you know, drag out months and months talking about the same thing, but what's our current policy towards alcohol or drug or illegal drug use? Do we have a written policy on that?
I don't know that I can quote it off the top of my head, so, we can, yeah.
Yeah, if you can summarize it.
We can get the language out and...
For that, I guess that would be November 18th maybe, a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Like, maybe we can talk about this then. It's one of those tough philosophical questions where you don't want to show to the public or our employees that we're compassionate towards these types of things, but at the same time, I for one am compassionate towards people who can make mistakes, and, you know, sometimes the employer to help out with that, so.
We have, there's a section in the, in both union contracts, for sure, so I'll bring the police one to you.
Yeah, if you can copy that in too.
Sure.
Any other comments on this this evening? I'd like to chew on this a little bit longer as well, at another meeting. If you have any additional questions, get those to Justin before, and we'll talk about this at November 18th. Moving on, do we have any new or unfinished business to come before the board this evening? Trustee Heinz?
Yeah, I got one, that road off of Montgomery, off Montgomery Road going into Montgomery Market, we should shut that road off, or at least put, have them put some gravel in them holes or something. You got holes, that's not exaggerating, about that deep in that thing you go through there, and you just got to cut over and go into the grass.
Who owns that road Mike? A private?
Private road, I think it's part of the...
It's Anderson property, but an agreement was made with Montgomery Market that they maintain that road, and it's Montgomery Road, it's Montgomery Market's place to fix that. Now, I know they're going to, it's going to be sold, but it should be fixed anyway.
It should be. Director Young, do you have an update on when La Chiquita's going to purchase that, and if that was included in the work that they said they could do?
We can check and see whether or not that was included in the work that they were going to do, obviously, as it's been identified, it's off-site. The update is that they intend to close by the end of November, and then they were going to give Montgomery Marketplace, I believe it was 30 days to clear out, and then they'd go into their renovation mode. So, most of the first quarter, if not the entire first quarter, would be renovation, and the facility would be closed.
But still, another month in a week, the state's got to fix that, at least throw some patching in there, because there's a lot of people complaining about that.
Yeah, yeah definitely. Find out who has the responsibility to do that, and if, if, follow our normal course of action on that. I know recently, there was another business down that way that had some issues that we, you know, reached out to and talked to, and they were happy to fix it.
We'll look into that further and report back.
Thank you. We don't have any future meetings?
We don't, ever.
November 10th, November 18th, November 24th?
Except for all the ones coming up. Just check your calendar for that. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for two purposes, which is to discuss litigation, which is filed or pending pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 over 2, and to discuss employment of employee pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 over 2 also.
So moved, second.
Call the roll please.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order and entertain a motion for, for adjournment.
Second.
By Trustee Heinz, second by Trustee Youngerman, call the roll please.
Trustee Heinz?
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
I'm adjourned, thank you.